2-733 in the matter of adjourning out of executive session.
So move.
Second.
Motion made with Commissioner Lewis, second with Commissioner Benton, discussion, vote?
Vote on motion 2-1-733. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 2-1-734 in the matter, sorry, public hearing for consideration of the Griffith number 391 drainage improvement petition filed by Girdon LLC and others.
So move.
Second.
Motion made in second, in discussion, vote?
Vote on motion 2-1-734. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 2-1-735 in the matter of approving for a specific occurrence a suspension of Rule 3 speaker registration, Rule 4 limitations, and Rule 7 public comment procedure from the rules governing public comment before the Board of County Commissioners of Delaware County, Ohio.
So move.
Second.
Motion made in second, in discussion, vote?
Vote on motion 2-1-735. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Good morning, everyone. I, we're starting a little late from the hearing. I, we apologize for that. Uh, I'm gonna kinda go through the guidelines that we're gonna follow today so that we're all on the same page. And this is the public hearing, the first public hearing for, uh, the, um, Griffith 391 drainage improvement petition, uh, filed by GRD N LLC and others. Uh, there's a sign up sheet in the back of the room. We ask that you please sign it. Uh, here is an overview of what will happen today. We're gonna hear a report from the county engineer in Soil and Water Conservation District. Uh, copies available in the back. Uh, we'll have questions from the board, if there are any. The board will acknowledge any receipt of written letters in favor or against the petition. And after questions will be the time for testimony from landowners. Uh, those speaking for or against the project must be to an owner as defined in Section 6131.01 of the Revised Code, or an attorney speaking on behalf of an owner. And during testimony, you will be asked to take an oath. When it is time to offer testimony, we'll work our way through the participants and testimony will continue if new information comes up or additional people wish to speak. Typically, we'll go those in favor and then those opposed. Uh, after testimony, the board will close the public hearing, or the board may choose to continue the hearing. After the hearing is closed, the board will decide whether to proceed with the survey and design or dismiss the petition. The board considers the following in their decision: whether the board finds that the proposed improvements is necessary, whether it will be conducive to the public welfare. The board also finds that it is reasonably certain that the benefits of the proposed improvements will outweigh the cost. If the board proceeds with the petition, the Delaware County Engineer will prepare plans, reports, and individual schedules and assessments for the project. When plans are complete, a final hearing will be set. Notification of the hearing will be given to the landowners, and the board will consider the project at that time. Uh, with that, I'll turn it over to, please, Soil and Water.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brett Bacon, Delaware Soil and Water Conservation District. I will read the first hearing report into the record. First hearing report, Griffith number 391 watershed drainage petition per ORC 6131, August 12th, 2021. This report has been prepared for the preliminary hearing on a drainage improvement petition filed by Girdon LLC on June 12th, 2020. The original petition has been signed by one person representing seven of the 35 parcels in the watershed. The general location and course of the requested improvements are quoted from the petition as follows: "In Delaware County, Berlin Township, within the Griffith number 391 watershed, and generally following but not limited to the course and termini of the existing improvements." The following is the nature of work petitioned, as quoted from the petition: "To generally improve the drainage, both surface and subsurface, to a good and sufficient outlet by replacing, repairing, or altering the existing improvements as required, and/or creating new surface and subsurface drainage mains or laterals as requested by this ditch petition." Petition process: This petition has been submitted according to Section 6131 of the Ohio Revised Code, or ORC, which authorizes the Board of Commissioners to act on behalf of benefited property owners to make drainage improvements. If the Board of Commissioners decides to proceed with the project, the costs related to the improvements in the development of the plans, reports, and schedules are assessed to the landowners in the watershed according to the benefit received to their watershed acreage. These special assessments will be added to the property taxes for each property, and can be spread over a maximum of a 15-year period. Property owners may also choose to pay their assessment in a lump sum payment prior to placement on their property taxes. Additionally, the improvements will be placed on the Delaware County Drainage Maintenance Program in perpetuity per ORC Section 6137, and the annual maintenance assessment will appear on property tax statements as a special assessment in the same manner as the construction assessments. These annual maintenance assessments are generally in the range of 2% to 3% of the construction assessment. It should be noted that property owners are only assessed for those improvements that are located downstream from their properties. No property is assessed for improvements located upstream. The public agencies that own rights of way for public roads and other public lands are also assessed for both construction and maintenance costs in the same manner as private property owners. The decision to approve a petition project is a three-step process. First, a viewing of the proposed improvement is conducted for the Commissioners to familiarize themselves with the watershed and general conditions. The Commissioners conducted the viewing for this project by drone video on April 12th, 2021. Next, a preliminary hearing is held to consider the initial feasibility of the proposal. It is this preliminary first hearing that is before us today. If this petition is approved, a final hearing will be conducted to further consider this petition. At that time, final details such as engineering plans and specifications, cost estimates, and a proposed schedule of assessments will be known. Existing conditions: The Delaware Soil and Water Conservation District and Delaware County Engineers Office have made the following observations of the watershed using onsite evaluation and a review of available historic records, aerial photography, topographic mapping, and soils mapping. The Griffith number 391 watershed is approximately 448 acres. The predominant land use within the watershed is currently agricultural. There are also areas of rural residential, road right-of-way, and woods. Improvements in the watershed have been constructed using the ORC 6131 process in 1914. These improvements consisted of subsurface drain installation and open ditch construction. The drainage system does not appear to be functioning at or near optimum capacity due to a lack of comprehensive maintenance and the generally deteriorated condition of the infrastructure. The lack of uniform and maintained surface grading results in significant areas of ponded water. The subsurface drain system appears to have significant areas of structural failure as observed by sporadic blowouts along its course. These conditions are indicators of an overburdened and aged drainage infrastructure. While the existing drainage system still provides some degree of drainage benefit, it does not appear to function as a good and sufficient outlet. Estimate of cost factors favorable, unfavorable, benefit versus cost. ORC 6131 requires the county engineer to state in a report factors favorable and unfavorable to a proposed project, estimate the cost of the project, and state an opinion as to whether the benefits of the project exceed the cost. The following information is presented for your consideration. Construction estimate: The project would begin at the junction of the Griffith number 391 drainage system and the Havens Drainage Maintenance Project ID number 1814, and extend upstream to the north side of Peachbloom Road to meet the request of the petitioner. The primary items of work along the entire length would include open channel construction, surface drain shaping or grading, shaping and grading, the replacement of existing subsurface drains ranging in size from 6-inch to 18-inch in diameter, the construction of a grade stabilization structure, brush and vegetation removal, and seeding and mulching of disturbed areas. If the project proceeds to a final hearing, portions of the watershed may be further divided into sections to better define the areas of work and the associated costs and benefits. This level of detail is not determined for the preliminary hearing and is only undertaken if the petition moves forward to a second or final hearing. The cost estimate as presented below reflects the entire requested project area. Construction: $117,932.55. Drainage maintenance, first year startup, 5% of the construction estimate, $5,896.63. Project administration, survey and engineering, 10% of the construction estimate, $11,793.26. Total project estimate, $135,622.43. Notes: It is important to understand that the above estimates are preliminary and made in the absence of a current detailed topographic survey of the project area. The above estimate assumes complete reconstruction of the open channel. Should the project be approved to proceed to a final hearing, improvements made by private property owners will be evaluated for acceptance onto drainage maintenance in their current condition. If all or part of the current open channel meets current engineering standards and is able to be accepted onto maintenance, the value of that infrastructure would be removed from future construction estimates. However, said value would remain part, a part of the drainage maintenance base for the project. The above estimate does not contain a contingency amount. The amount of necessary contingency would be evaluated as part of the survey and engineering design of the project and added to the estimate presented at the final hearing. Contingency cost is typically estimated at 15% to 20% of the final construction estimate. Should the project be, should the project fail to be approved at the final hearing, the benefiting landowners as defined by ORC 6131 may still be responsible for the cost of project administration, survey, and engineering design. Assessments: If the project moves forward to the second hearing, the Ohio Revised Code instructs the county engineer to calculate the assessments to individual property owners based on the benefits received from the improvements for the various properties in the watershed. ORC 6131 states that, quote, "Uplands that have been removed from their natural state by deforestation, cultivation, artificial drainage, urban development, or other man-made causes shall be considered as benefited by an improvement required to dispose of the accelerated flow of water from the uplands." Benefits are further defined by the ORC as elimination or reduction of damage from flood, removal of water conditions that jeopardize public health, safety, or welfare, and increased value of land resulting from the improvement. Individual parcel assessments are not calculated for the preliminary hearing and are only calculated if the petition moves to, moves forward to a second or final hearing. Factors favorable, unfavorable. Factors favorable to the improvement: improved surface and subsurface drainage in the watershed, improved outlet for subsurface drainage components of household sewage treatment systems and for residential drainage systems, reduction of future deterioration of surface and subsurface drainage infrastructure, annual inspections, maintenance, and protection of the improvement in perpetuity. Factors unfavorable to the improvement: temporary land use disruption during construction, cost of construction and maintenance may be a burden to some landowners, removal of existing trees and brush in the improvement area. Benefits versus cost: Assessments for property within the watershed are calculated based on the benefits derived. A publication by the Ohio State University Extension titled "Returns to Farm Drainage" details several studies conducted by Ohio State researchers on the effects of drainage on crop yields. The studies show that fields with good drainage will produce higher yields than fields that have poor drainage. A recently completed 25-year study showed that subsurface drainage increased corn yields by 24% to 39%, and increased soybean yields by 13% to 46%. The same study also analyzed the return on investment for installing subsurface drainage in a field. It found that for corn, $4 is returned for every $1 invested, and for soybeans, $3 is returned for every $1 invested. To state it generally, the benefits of drainage will equal the increased yield multiplied by the market price. The increased value or benefit of residential parcels is much more subjective and difficult to quantify. For residential properties, the lack of an adequate drainage outlet can negatively impact the condition of the household sewage treatment systems, potentially limiting, limiting the value of the home for resale. Should the existing system fail, the cost to perform repairs or construct an alternate sewage treatment system can range from the thousands to tens of thousands of dollars. It would also be reasonable to consider the cost of environmental degradation due to residential sewage treatment systems that may not be functioning properly. Other benefits that are commonly perceived as a result of drainage improvements focus on quality of life and positive neighborhood perception. Communities that have planned and maintained stormwater drainage infrastructures generally have higher resale values than those communities that are known to have a history of drainage problems or flooding. Conclusions: Based on all of the information gathered and generated for this project, I believe this project is technically feasible and would adequately serve the project area's drainage needs. However, the testimony brought to the board by the landowners as to whether the benefits of this project exceed the cost should be given significant consideration in the decision to move forward with this project. Should the current petition be approved to proceed to a final hearing, the petition bond will be returned, and detailed plans, specifications, estimated costs, and a schedule of assessments would be prepared. Additionally, a benefit versus cost analysis will also be performed to further determine the feasibility of advancing this proposed project.
Thank you. Uh, is any questions from the board?
Yeah, Brett, I had a question for you. Under the construction estimate, your bullet points under notes, um, you talk about the above estimate assumes complete reconstruction of the open channel. But if, if the landowner or landowners did some of that work themselves, they could save money, assuming they do work to the standards that, that you would require.
That bullet point specifically references an area of open channel that has had some significant work done by one of the downstream landowners, uh, would be on the extreme downstream end of the project. It's entirely possible that that work, uh, has put the open channel in a, a state that would meet our specifications, meet our requirements. We have not had the opportunity to evaluate or survey that yet. As such, for the purpose of the first hearing estimate, I think to be fair, we have to assume that we would have to do work on that, but it's, it's entirely possible that we would not. If that is the case, then obviously that would, uh, be work that would not be included in the construction estimate because nothing would need to be done. However, we would still propose taking that reach of channel onto drainage maintenance to serve as a good and sufficient outlet for the, the petition request.
You have a feel for how much of the construction estimate that is? 5%, 10%, 50%?
Um, I haven't actually penciled out the footage. I think we're talking about probably somewhere between 500 to maybe 800, probably not quite 1,000 feet of, of open channel, and we would have estimated the open channel at somewhere between $5 and $10 a foot.
Okay, okay. So there could be some decent savings.
Yes.
If that work has been done to standard and is in shape.
Right, right.
And the maintenance of that area would be, I assume, based on the, the hire number because it, you would have had to assume you had, would have had to done the work.
Right, right.
Otherwise, you'd have a, it'd be under.
As per some similar projects that we've had where we have taken some existing infrastructure on maintenance, there would still be a need to include that in the maintenance base value for the project to calculate and collect those, those drainage maintenance assessments on the annual basis, but it would not be that upfront cost that the landowners would be asked to pack in.
Uh, do we have, thank you. Do you have any written letters, uh?
No, no written letters.
At this time, we will open it up to testimony from the landowners based on the criteria that I've already given. You'd be an owner or attorney representing a landowner. Uh, with that, first I will ask for anyone who wants to speak in favor of the project. If they come in forward, I will introduce yourself, and I will, uh, give you oath so you can testify. Are you wanting to speak for or against?
You don't have to speak.
You don't, there's no requirement to speak.
You don't have to speak.
Yeah, I would like to speak, but I wouldn't say that I'm either for or against. I just wanted to kind of explain my position.
Well, let me, let's do this. Speak for and against, and then I'll give you an opportunity. Is that fair? Anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the, uh, proposal? Anyone here who would like to speak in opposition? There's not appear to be anyone for or against. Uh, with that, if you'll come forward, and, uh, I will swear you in. Introduce yourself, please.
Bob Girdon.
And your address?
10590 Wellington Boulevard, Powell, Ohio 43065.
And you are a landowner?
Yes.
Okay. If you'll raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Proceed.
So, we, we are, um, the, the property owner there in the blue. Uh, I father bought about 100 acres there. Part of ours are trib areas in Havens and then part is in Griffin 391. Um, we were assessed, uh, some of the costs for Havens Ditch as well. So, we're in the process of developing the land. We're in contract with a developer and a home builder locally. Um, it, probably gonna be closing on the first phase really soon. Um, they're probably gonna be starting construction within the month. Um, infrastructure, so, so what a requirement for us to move forward with the project was to deal with the stormwater. So there was a significant amount of stormwater that was traveling south underneath Peachbloom Road. Um, we worked with the county to try to figure out a way to make that work, and kinda came to the conclusion that that drainage outlet was not sufficient for our site to move forward. So, kind of a requirement of us was to fill out a ditch petition, um, to see what the Commissioners would stay, say if they felt that that water and that ditch petition would go through. So, in the meantime, what we were allowed to do to move forward with the project prior to the ditch petition was reroute all of our stormwater from the trib area that's in blue up there, along Peachbloom Road, up around the Gunling five-acre property, through Belmont Storm System, and down through Havens Ditch. And that's where all our stormwater's going right now. It's approved, the city, the county, everyone has approved it. So, we don't really require this ditch petition anymore. Um, like I said before, it was a decision that, a requirement that we had to do to move forward. So they, they let us reroute. We have to do all the infrastructure to take all of that water. There's a couple large, uh, retention basins over here, uh, to the east. All that water up through, we had to, sorry, we had to make the pipes bigger, we had to make them deeper. There was a lot of extra work we had to do.
Let me ask a question. You're asking, is it possible to dismiss the petition? Is that your question?
Um, I, I, I don't know that I, I would be able to ask that question to you. Um...
I'll get a clarification if that's your question.
I'm, I'm gonna tell you a couple things, though, and, and the reason why I'm up here explaining this to you is I know the school went in, right? And I know the school needs that outlet. I know Metro needs that outlet. Metro is Don Kenny, he owns that property. There's a lot of other folks that need that outlet. So, um, I, I guess I don't know if I wanted to dismiss it. I just wanted to come up and explain to you, I don't need that anymore. And I know when Stavroff was in here and Havens Ditch, they got hit with the brunt of the cost of that ditch. So, depending upon what you are gonna do and if you're gonna move forward with the ditch petition, we were required to put an outlet that we could conceivably take some of that water and run it through this drainage area, this Griffin 391 ditch petition drainage area, if you approved it. If you didn't approve it, then we're allowed to run all of our water through Belmont Place, down through Havens Ditch, the ditch that's already in place. So, you know, I guess I'm not here to ruffle feathers. Um, if you decide to move forward, I know Rob Riley is here, and they, they really want this because they, they need it for the school because right now they just have a basin that's kind of subsurface and going really nowhere. Um, but if you decide to move forward with it, I guess I would ask that when there's an assessment and an allocation of assessments, you would take that into consideration where the water's gonna go.
Well, I think it was already indicated, all things will be taken into consideration, but the responsible, that'd be determined during the second hearing, and I see a nod there. So let's start, I don't know, should you go first, or should Soil and Water go first?
Well, I mean, your, your, uh, the statutory criteria are the same, no matter what, and you evaluate it based on that. Um, if, if this area has been permanently removed from this watershed, there is a procedure to have this property assessed as a part of the other project. So, I mean, you could, you could deal with it differently. Um, but I bet, uh, Soil and Water has more to say on that than, than I do.
If you'll have a chair seat, we'll have Soil and Water comment.
Yeah, I, I can comment on that process specifically, and then I think maybe Rob has some more insight into the engineering of what's been approved or done so far. There is a process in ORC 61, I don't know whether it's 31 or 37.
37.
37, called equalization, where acres are found to, uh, be benefiting from a project constructed under 6131 that were not assessed as part of the original construction. This would be a case that would, we would be required to initiate that procedure. And essentially what happens, as I understand and, and have read on the law and the procedure, we essentially go back to the Havens project in this case, reconstruct the schedule of assessments with the new acres included, um, determine what the new construction base would have been for those additional acres, and then they would be required to pay that amount into, um, the Drainage Maintenance Fund for the Havens project over a set number of years. It's not an upfront, one-time payment, but there is a, I think the code spells out, five years or eight years, or, or it's in there. Um, so it's not, th- those acres aren't permitted to just use the infrastructure constructed under 6131 at no cost. They would be included, they would have a construction buy-in, and then they would be included at that base for future maintenance costs of the Havens project. Additionally, the Havens project was constructed based on a certain amount of watershed. So, you know, the, the design was done based on expecting a certain flow. That flow is not going to increase. I mean, it's still going to be restricted to that flow. So if there is additional acreage being brought in, the, the flow off that property would necessarily be, I'll use the term metered or restricted, to the flow that would have been expected from the original Havens watershed acreage.
So, in summary, if, uh, if the flow is going somewhere else, then that would be adjusted?
Yes.
And really doesn't have any material effect on what we're talking about today?
It, it could, if you choose to dismiss this petition, either at this stage or at a, a final hearing stage.
Have you heard anything that would make you want, think it's not necessary to go forward today? Or you think we still, are you still recommending we go forward?
My opinion is, uh, unless there's, I'll say solid engineering, and I'll defer to, to Rob on this, you know, our, our standard practice is water needs to, to continue in the watershed that Mother Nature determined that it should be, and not be diverted.
So the, so is, is there adequate drainage for the, the area in this watershed north of Peachbloom right now?
To?
To the Havens?
I can't answer that question.
Oh, you don't know?
No, that's, that's, and I don't know what engineering's been done, what, what the calculations are.
Okay. Could Rob or Brett answer that, then?
Uh, good morning. Rob Riley, Chief Deputy Engineer. Uh, so we've...
Do we need to swear in?
He doesn't need to be sworn in, does he? Does he?
Yes.
He does?
Yes, yeah.
Raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Proceed.
Again, Rob Riley, Chief Deputy Engineer. Uh, so we have been working with Mr. Girdon for, for quite a while, and we appreciate his cooperation on, on, uh, most recently, uh, working with him on the North Road and Peachbloom Roundabout. Uh, the, um, so just to, I'll do my best to give you a quick summary of the, kind of where, what the, the current plan is to handle the drainage. Uh, we've been in discussion with Mr. Girdon's engineer, uh, his builder's engineer, I should say, uh, to basically come up with a plan, an interim plan, uh, to deal with the drainage from Winterbrook Place, which is basically in the blue area on the map. Uh, so in essence, uh, the plan that is currently in place would, uh, send the low, the, the low flows, the frequent storm events west, uh, towards Belmont Place, towards the existing ponds that are in place. Those, uh, discharges would go through the Havens Ditch that was already constructed. Uh, the higher flows, uh, the, the less frequent storms would still need to outlet, uh, along the, the corridor that's defined here, the yellow line. Uh, and so, uh, what we're talking about is an outlet for the high, the high, high flows, the big, big storms, uh, that would be in excess of the capacity that can go west towards Belmont. And so, uh, there is certainly a need to handle that in some capacity. There's an interim solution that will at least allow the, the subdivision not to flood, but ultimately, the area we're talking about, uh, will, it's not a very good outlet. It needs upgraded per, per our report that, uh, Mr. Bacon read into, read into the record. So, uh, we are supporting the, uh, the need for this project. Uh, with that said, a lot of this, the ultimate design depends on, um, the Berlin Meadows. So Berlin Meadows, I'll call your intention to, uh, parcels 11, 27, uh, I believe 34 as well. Uh, that is part of the Berlin Meadows subdivision that is being, uh, ultimately developed by Metro Development. Uh, their project would construct at least a portion of the, the drainage through that area. Uh, so, the portion that would remain would be on parcels 19, 7, and 32, uh, that even with Metro's development, uh, there would still need to be an outlet for their development as well. So, uh, what I would propose is we would, uh, if, if you wish to proceed with this project, we would work with Metro, make sure that our, we're not duplicating design that their subdivision would provide. Uh, but ultimately, I think there's no question there will need to be some downstream improvements, as I said. as I said, across 7 and 32 and potentially 19. 19 was what you were talking about earlier with, that portion may already be sufficient, but we won't know until.
And to summarize, is there a recommendation we should move forward?
Correct. That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you. We had someone come in, I believe must have a comment. Come on up, introduce yourself. And I don't know if you signed the sign sheet or not, but you did.
I, I haven't, but I will.
Okay.
Rick Carr, representing Buckeye Swim Club, the owners of the, of 1895 Peachbloom Road, the two parcels which would be between the train tracks basically coming in to the west.
Can you swear you in? And I am curious, are you speaking for or against?
Neutral.
Okay, everybody's neutral today. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have your God.
I do.
Proceed.
Thank you. Again, Rick Carr, 1895 Peachbloom Road, Buckeye Swim Club. We own the two parcels for the swim club that are immediately to the west of the train tracks on Peachbloom Road. Our concern is whether we're, our parcels are in or out of, number one, we don't have any clear comments either way of, on those two parcels. The yellow line comes on the, on the lot line, basically. Most of our water does on that, from our analysis drains towards the railroad tracks.
We'll get clarification on that. Is that your concern about whether you're in or out, basically?
That, that's the number, number one concern.
Okay, go ahead and give us the other one.
Can you maybe point out parcel numbers?
Like in Oregon, right? We're, we're these two parcels right here.
So 15 and 22?
Uh, I'd have to look at the parcel, the parcel numbers, but either, so, you know, we're, we're concerned whether we're in or out because it really doesn't encompass, except for a few feet of our property lines. Number one. Number two, almost all this area is going to be developed with homes or businesses within the next two years. So what's the impact of the design for those, as well as we're in the process of rezoning with Berlin Township Zoning Commission currently, to go to plant commercials so we can put the, the competitive swim pool in for the community, as well as the swim school, and additional office space that'll house much-needed daycare and other facilities that the community needs to support all this growth, so.
Okay. Let's get a little clarification.
Yeah.
My first question will be whether you're in or out.
Exactly.
And then question number two, from what you're seeing, it seems to be a small area, so it's probably nominal anyway, but let's have, let's have Brett, Soul and Water comment on that. So if you just take a seat right there and then.
Yeah, I can answer, hopefully answer both questions regarding the watershed and then the, the engineering and the future development. The watershed line, for the purpose of a first hearing, is determined using an entirely automated process. We do not do any field verification of that line until we would get into a survey and design phase. Part of the survey and design phase is to take a closer look at that watershed and adjust it if necessary. The, the fact that they received a letter is, is indicative of the fact that the, the automated tool believes some portion of that property to be within the watershed, that that tool is based on u- using a geographic information system program and some data we use from the state of Ohio called LiDAR, which places an elevation using ground, ground two sensing at a two and a half foot grid basis. So it's pretty accurate. Obviously, given what I'm seeing on the map, I mean, we're talking hundreds or a tenth or so of an acre at most on, on each of those properties. It's important to note that one of the main factors in calculating the assessments for a project like this is the acres benefited. So, the, the cost, as you indicated, would be nominal to a property that has such a low amount of acreage in the watershed. As far as taking into account future development, that, that is absolutely considered in, in the design of the project and at the time of calculating that schedule of assessments, if the land use of that property has changed or is, is known to be changing, then, then we adjust how we look at that property per the, or for the schedule of assessments. It is treated as it, as it will be, so.
But to the degree that impacted the watershed, it would, there would, could, would, it could be some impact?
Um, it, it's likely to not impact the acres, how do I want to put this? The acres drained, the acres benefited for a project, it, it may affect our design and what we have to account for as far as flow.
Which properties are we talking about, Brett? Maybe that's a question for Rick. I know number nine.
Right here.
15 and 22.
15 and 22.
Yeah, that, that little, just cut that little.
Oh, okay. So you're right up against the railroad tracks, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, you got it, yeah, a little sliver. At least in this.
Mr. Carr did answer a question. Okay, so, thank you. And be sure and sign the sheet. Okay. Any questions from the?
No.
Any other comments for anyone? Brett, I'm going to ask you a question I ask every time. Go up and give the answer.
You want to ask the question for the record?
Have you heard anything today that would change your recommendation?
No, I have not.
Okay, thank you. With that.
I'm going to move that the hearing be closed.
Would you read the present?
Resolution number 21-736, in the matter of closing the public hearing for the consideration of the Griffiths number 391 drainage improvement petition filed by Girdon LLC and others.
So move.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion, vote?
Vote on motion 21-736. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Bitten?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
With that, is, any comments from my fellow board members?
Okay. I'm looking for the, my script.
Aye.
I'm going to move that we go ahead with, with the.
Proceeding with the petition?
Yeah.
Okay. With that, would you read that resolution?
Resolution number 21-737, in the matter of proceeding with the petition at the Griffiths number 391 drainage improvement filed by, filed by Girdon LLC and others, and ordering the Delaware County engineer to proceed with the preparation of reports, plans, and spec- sorry, schedules for the proposed improvement.
So move.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion. I'll just, as, I think what we've heard today is there is a need to move forward. We have utmost confidence in Soul and Water, that they will, they do a fair and reasonable evaluation and will get the best outcome, and with that, I support the resolution.
Yeah, this area is in the process of being developed in the very near future, and it really looks like this needs to be done.
Yeah, now is the time to look at it.
Yeah. Working with the appropriate landowners, including the developer and the schools and so on.
With that, call for vote?
Vote on motion 21-737. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Bitten?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Very well. So, any other business to bring forth? There is none?